Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education meeting on October seventeen, twenty-two, in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. The mission of Mount Pleasant Public Schools is to empower excellence. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There's time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. Please silence yourself if you have not already, and then please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our indigenous land acknowledgements. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inshabbi people whose traditional land we are gathered on here today. To recognize the Inshabbi people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation, and a way of honoring the indigenous peoples who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial, and whose land on which the Saginaw Indian tribe have resided, and in fact, continue to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of the land and seek to understand our place within that history. Bully, roll forward.
Melissa Isaac.
Mommy, here.
Lily Kendall, here.
Tim Oderker.
Here.
Dana Hartman.
Here.
Jessica Junigun.
Sheila Murphy.
Amy Ball.
Is there anything to modify in this evening's agenda? Not seeing anything. We will go on to the student board representative, Isabel Goodrich. Welcome, Isabel.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name's Isabel Goodrich. You might remember me from last time I came to speak. I'm the vice president of external communications on our Student Senate's e-board, so I'm here to share some of the cool things we've been working on lately. So, the last time that I was here, I told you guys about all of our homecoming festivities that we planned, and it all went amazing and perfectly to plan, so that was awesome. Next, we have started a new project this year called Admin Lunches. Each month, one administrator will have lunch with an e-board member as well as four to five of the Senate members. So lunch will be catered by Herbs and Spices, which is the school's restaurant run by students, which this is a great opportunity for us to have time with our administrators and to talk about the school's needs and our students, things we might like or dislike, and just to get to chat with and get to know some of our administrators. Ms. Willie met with some students in the month of October, and next up is Mrs. Davis, and I get to meet with her, and I'm really excited about it. Next, we're continuing to support the Teacher Your Awesome Project and the Student Your Awesome Project, which is like Student of the Month, Student of the Month, pretty much. So last month, we celebrated twenty-four Your Awesome students, and at each faculty meeting, we celebrate four faculty members who have made a difference. In conjunction with business management, we're bringing back the positive affirmations for MPHS students. Soon, when you enter the bathrooms, you will see positive statements like "You are beautiful", "And you matter", and vital on the back of mirrors. We will be putting some sticky notes with those same messages around the school periodically as well. Our last home football game is this Friday. The theme is Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness. I know all students are super excited for that. We're playing Linden, and it's also seen tonight, and we would love to see you there, and we are also working on decorating our fences for that as well. We are also planning our annual costume contest for Halloween and our Holiday Door decorating contest for the holidays. We're also thinking about a gingerbread house decorating contest as a departmental competition as well, and we're going to plan some little prizes for those two. And finally, we're super excited to implement some new positions to our Student Senate. As you may know, we have several e-board positions: the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, Parliamentarian, Internal Communications, and External Communications, which is me. And we're happy to announce that we will be adding the following positions to our e-board: a Fine Arts Advocate, a Yearbook Advocate, an Athletics Advocate, a Gated Straight Alliance Advocate, and a Native American Advocate. These will be students who will be appointed to serve by their advisors. Their job is to make sure that all of Senate, and in turn, all of the school, is aware of the things we should celebrate and share knowledge about. These positions will be appointed in the next two weeks, and were very much approved by the MPHS administration and this existing e-board. So, please feel free to contact me or advisor, Ms. Wish, if you have any questions about anything we're involved in. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. Many things on my report this evening, but first and foremost, I want to extend our welcome to our newest board member, Melissa Isaac. Very happy to have you join us. And we think you picked a great meeting to be your first meeting, so we have a lot of exciting things happening tonight. First, we do want to begin with some really important acknowledgements. The month of October is National Principal Appreciation Month. We turned that month into National Administrator Appreciation Recognition Month, and as you all know, we have an amazing team of twenty-two administrators that run our district and keep things going in the right direction as much as we're able to do every day. They have big jobs, they have big hearts, and they really dedicate their full selves to the students of our district and supporting their staff members along the way. So, we'll read everyone's names this evening. Not everyone could be here, but as your name is called, if you'll come up, Tim has a certificate for you, and then if you'll stay up front, we will be doing a picture when we're done. They're all very excited about that. Stephanie Binder is our Coordinator of State and Federal Programs. Kim Bishop's, Principal at Valles Elementary. Emily Brannick, Principal at Holon Elementary. Linda Boyd is our Assistant Superintendent. Mrs. Davis, Assistant Principal at Mount Pleasant High School. Ginger Favor, Chief Financial Officer. Stephanie Howe, Supervisor of Special Education. Joe Judge, Chief Financial Officer, I'm sorry, Chief Information Officer. Erin King, Principal at McGuire Elementary. Jason McIntyre, District Athletic Director. Kelly Merrihue, Assistant Supervisor of Special Education. Jeff Pladdy, Director of Adult Community Education Programs. Josh Rhodes, Director of Transportation Facilities Maintenance. Katie Ranky, Principal of Financial Elementary. Mercy Stout, Principal of Ganyard Elementary. Mary Kay Vogt, Director of Correctional Isabella Technical Education Center. Matt Waldertak, Assistant Principal of Mount Pleasant Middle School. Darby Weaver, Principal of Mount Pleasant Middle School. Kristen Willey, Assistant Principal of Mount Pleasant High School. John Winkler, Principal of Mount Pleasant High School. And Julie Wright, Dean of Students at Mount Pleasant. Every room is just invited and thanked. This team, they are truly the heart and soul of our district, so thank you for all that you do. That would be very nice. I'm having so good I signed my own certificate and didn't even realize it. The next really, really important group of district employees that we want to recognize this evening is our Transportation Department, and we talk about our bus drivers a lot. We talk about the need for more bus drivers, but this hardworking crew of individuals, their job could not be more important. Not only do they transport our students back and forth to school in a safe manner every day, they are the first person they see, our students see in the morning, and they are the last person our students see as they get off the bus. So, your jobs are critical to the success of our students every day, and we are so grateful for all you do. So again, we'll recognize our drivers. When your name's called, please come up, and then we'll do one more photo. Okay, so I know I'm getting excited about that. Lori Arthur. Missy Higgins. Timothy Kirby. Matt Kissel. Darren Palmer. Mark Pitts. Phil Traynor. Thank you to our drivers, to their commitment to our district, and to keeping our students safe on the way to and from school every day. We could not do that without you. We'll have you all stand for just a second while board members join again for a quick photo. So, given that it's going to be a late night here and lightly an early morning, especially with the white stuff in the sky today, I did tell our drivers and our administrators that if you needed to leave back at this point, it was absolutely fine. So, thank you for being here, and have a good evening. The next item on our agenda is our annual financial presentation. We have with us this evening our auditor from Yo and Yo, Jamie Rabet. Jamie, thank you for being here tonight.
Sorry, Jamie. You lost half your audience.
I thought you picked the same meeting, but I guess not. I'm just kidding. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jamie Rabet. I'm an audit partner with Yo and Yo CPAs, and I was in charge of doing your annual audit. So in front of you, you have a lot of information, and it always makes me laugh a little bit because, as Ginger knows, we say we're paperless. We want her to give us everything electronically, and then I bring a whole box of paper for you. So, I'll just touch on quick what you have in front of you. I'm going to go over the highlights tonight, but I know there's a new board member too, so I'll just kind of point out a few things. So you do have a printed bound copy of the audited financial statements. It's the thicker one that is the landscape. And then we have what we call a single audit, and I will talk about what that is because you have federal expenditures. We do a separate compliance audit. That's the smaller, the one that's portrait. And then you have a letter that's also slid in there somewhere. It's on our letterhead, and that's called the governance letter, and I'll point out a couple of things in that too as we move along. But tonight, I am just going to go over the PowerPoint presentation, and it really is the highlights from the audit. So, to get us started, on the first slide, it really talks about what I am here for to give the presentation tonight, and that's because MDE requires every school district to have an independent annual audit done, and what you're looking for from your auditor is the opinion on those financial statements. So, management really is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and then as your auditors, my team and I come in, we audit that information presented, and then we issue you an opinion. And the district was issued an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance offered, and it is the best opinion that you can get. I also want to point out that we do have a new standard that we implemented this year, and that's noted at the bottom as the lease standard. I've been talking about it for a couple of years now, and kind of giving you a warning that it was coming up, but we did have to implement it this year, where we booked a receivable and then a deferred inflow because of your cell tower lease, and then some space that the district leases to a local nonprofit organization. So there's a little bit of change in that, how we needed to report that. So to give them the numbers here, we have what we call the BLM sheet of your governmental funds. This is broken down into the categories that we're required to report on the financial statement. So the first column is your general fund, which is your main operating fund, and then we have a new fund this year, which is your 2022 Capital Projects Fund. So, back in February of '22, you had the new Capital Projects Fund, and then everything else gets combined into that third column, which is called your non-major governmental fund. So just as a reminder, that includes your food service, the self-sustaining reports, we have your bookstore, the community services, the student and school activity, the rest of your capital projects funds, and then also the rest of your debt service funds are included in that column too. So just a couple of things I'll point out on this page. For your general fund, you have seventeen million in assets. The majority of that is made up of due from other governments. So because of the timing of when you get your state aid, we have a strict cutoff at June thirtieth. While your July and August state aid, we do book back into June thirtieth as a receivable, and that's about ten point one million of that total seventy million. And then the rest of it, about six point three million, is cash that we have at June thirtieth. We have a little bit of federal grants and some RSD money that's also a receivable at June thirtieth. And then your liabilities for your general fund mainly are made up of accrued salaries payable, so the time that's been earned but then is paid out over the summer. We have about two point one million of accrued salaries payable, and then also the related accrued expenditures for that of about one point eight million, which really is your Mesa and then the retirement expenses. So your fund balance for general fund at the end of the year was ten point one million. Now, your Capital Projects Fund, because of the timing of that and when the money came in, we didn't have a lot of projects that were spent out of that fund, so you do have a lot of money sitting in there for cash at June thirtieth. That twenty-three point five million was all cash that only can be spent on those specific projects for your Capital Projects Fund. We have a little bit of AP and liabilities. Now, your non-major funds, most of that is cash from all those other funds that I rattled off, along with some due from other funds. So we do have some money that gets paid out of general fund, and then the other funds reimburse them for that, so we do have some due to, due from there. Now, the next slide then will show the revenue and expenditures for these funds too. So, general fund, we had a positive change in our fund balance, which means our revenue succeeded our expenditures at June thirtieth of about one point eight million, so we increased our fund balance to that ten point one million that I mentioned on the previous slide. Your Capital Projects Fund, like I mentioned, we didn't spend a lot of that, so we did have an increase in our fund balance. There you can see, we started with zero because it was a brand-new fund, so we had about twenty-three million that we added to fund balance. And then all those other non-major funds combined had a positive almost three hundred thousand that was added back to their fund balance at the end of the year. And all of this information, the detail, is in the financial statements too. Those non-major funds are in the back on page six dash two, if you ever wanted to go back and see the breakdown of those funds individually. This slide now is showing your general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and you have your peers listed at the top, and when we talk about peers, it's ones that are related to you for your state aid membership. So that's how we kind of compare districts on similar size. It's based on the student count, the student membership. So within this peer group, we do pull these numbers, you know, from MDE. You are on the lower end of that with that peer group. That's where you fall, so just keep that in mind. And then we have those percentages there. So the total that we have here for '21-'22, that is your total fund balance. That is not the way that I know Ginger calculates it out. That's not all the dollars that can be spent, because that includes restricted money too. So, when we break it down into what you can really spend, I know we take the fund balance less subsequent years expenditures, minus out what's been set aside for building and department expenses, that percentage really is about eighteen point four percent of your total fund balance. MDE's recommendation is fifteen to twenty percent, so you are right within that average of what they think is a good amount to have on hand. If we look at unassigned only, so those are ones that don't have any strings attached to them, that lowers it to about fourteen point five percent. So we do a couple of different calculations and just making sure we're comparing apples to apples on how these numbers are calculated. Now, my next couple of slides are focusing on where do we think the year was going to end up, and then, so that would be our original budget, and then we have an administrative year, and we have a final budget. So this slide excludes the tribal grant money, and then I have a slide that will show just that. So, that first column, really I say is your best guess at the beginning of the school year, and as we know, things change drastically sometimes during the year from MDE. You don't know how much federal dollars you're getting. You don't always know how much money we're getting from the state either, so that first column is what you know at that time. And at that time, you know, our best guess was about a hundred and one thousand dipping into fund balance. Now, the second column is your final budget. So this is during the year, we make amendments to put us more in line with the things that have changed and what we expect our year to end up as. So that's about seven hundred and eighteen thousand adding back to fund balance. And then the third column, that's really what happened. So those are the actual revenues and expenditures of the general fund for the district, and you can see off to the right, because I know in our eyes, these changes are big dollar amounts, right? I mean, I don't have a forty-nine million dollar budget, so when you have these changes, it looks big. So I like to put this percent accurate because I think that really shows the reflection on the dollar amount and how well you guys did at amending the budget and coming in at about ninety-six percent to ninety-four percent accuracy on what the original to the final budget compared to your actual was. So, to put it in perspective, last year, you were about ninety-four percent accurate in your revenue, so again, better than last year, and then your expenditures was about ninety-two percent, so again, a little bit better than last year. So, great job on making those amendments and watching those budget to actual reports. Now, the next slide always looks a little funny to me because of the tribal grants and how we budget for them. The revenue, the budget, is based on the current year contribution, so you know, we can amend the budget up till June thirtieth, so that's what the current year contributions are. And then the expenditures budget, we budget all that's available to be spent, because we really don't know how much is going to be spent. So that's why you see this, whoa, that looks like a significant dollar amount, because that's what's available to be spent. So the actual column on the right, that's really what happened. So for the tribal grants, you took in about six hundred and ninety-seven thousand and spent about six hundred and thirty-five thousand, so you ended in the positive about sixty-two thousand to fund balance for the tribal grants only. On the next slide here, we have a comparison to last year. So we're looking at your June thirtieth, 2022, to June thirtieth, 2021, and just kind of comparing them to each other. Revenue, you can see, did increase over last year. It went up about six point six percent, and really, the majority of that was an increase in your state funding. It was about two point two million increase in state funding, that state aid that was available, as well as some increase in your federal grants, and then increase in tribal grants over last year. The expenditures, when I pulled those up and, you know, kind of tried to go through and thinking, oh, you're just going to see one big increase, we really didn't. It was kind of all across the board, as we know, costs went up. All of these were in line with your budget too, so that does show that you were watching the budget, and all these expenditures were ones that were going to be budgeted for, and that shows that increase there of about four point seven percent in your expenditures from last year. And then we have a pie chart just away, I think it's easier to see a picture of where the revenue is coming from, instead of trying to follow some numbers across the page. Just gives you a quick snapshot where your general fund revenue is coming from, and you can see fifty-eight percent is coming from the state and state aid, and I compared that to last year, it was fifty-seven percent. Your federal dollars makes up about eight percent of your total general fund revenue. Last year, it was about nine percent. And then the local there, the bottom right corner, is twenty-six percent of your general fund revenue. So that's property taxes, admissions, and athletic fees. That's what's included in that, along with some contributions. Now, my next two slides are a breakdown of the expenditures, again, focusing on your general fund here, and instruction is the largest one, that's sixty-three percent of the total, or a little over twenty-nine million, and that includes the basic programs, added needs, and adult ed. And last year, that was the exact same percent, it's sixty-three percent. I also audited another district that has very similar size for you compared to you with their state aid membership, and their instruction was sixty-seven percent. So it's a little bit higher, however, they don't have hardly any capital outlay, which you guys have about six hundred and eighty-two thousand, and then their other was only about ten thousand. So when you're trying to pull that out, you know, you're close and rate in line with them. Same with the supporting services. You have thirty-two percent, they had thirty-three percent. So the allocation between instruction and supporting services was very similar amongst that other district I compared you to. Now, on the next page for your general fund expenditures, this is just a different way to look at it, so it takes all those expenditures, and then it breaks it down between salaries, fringe benefits, purchase services, and supplies, materials on here. And you are rate in line, the salaries and benefits equal about eighty-three percent, and most districts, you know, it's eighty to eighty-five percent is what we say is made up of the people, right? And that's your salaries and then your fringe benefits. So again, rate in line with the expectations of where we would expect you to be, you know, for a school district. Now, you have a couple of slides on just the bond progress here, showing the cumulative total of your revenue and expenditures to date. So the 2016 bond progress here, the bond audit was completed, there's about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars left in cash at June thirtieth. The 2022 bond progress, you have about four million in revenue to date with about two point two million that's been spent of that, so you have a little over one point eight million left in cash for your 2020 bond progress. And because 2022 is the first year, we just showed it a little bit differently since we don't have anything to really chart yet, but we do have your revenue of the twenty-four point two million almost, with the expenditures just over one million dollars. So the majority of that's left in cash, as I pointed out on one of the earlier slides. Now, that MIPS's rate history, it did go up, but not by very much this year, so that is, that's a good thing. We had seen some significant increases since 2017, and has been creeping up year over year. So it's a very small increase from 21 to 22. Now, in addition to doing the financial statement audit of tying out all those numbers and, you know, going through and getting third-party documentation for as much information as we can, we're also required to gain an understanding of the internal controls. And we do look through your key transaction cycles, which for you are receipts, disbursements, payroll, capital assets, and then we did look at some of the staffing that you have through. And we do look through your key transaction cycles, which for you are receipts, disbursements, payroll, capital assets. And then we did look at some of the staffing that you have through PCMI. So we had, I'm very excited to know we did not have any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. So those would be misstatements that we find while we're performing the financial statement audit and internal controls. So we are happy to report that we did not have any findings to note. And in addition, as I mentioned, we have the single audit. So because the district does receive and spend more than 750,000 in federal expenditures, we then have to do a deeper dive into some specific grants and the major programs. So we did test three major programs this year. The Emergency Connectivity Fund, Title I, and then the ESF, the Education Stabilization Fund. And this is from the federal government and we get a compliance supplement with, it's yes or no questions. There are no gray area, whereas when we're auditing, we like, okay, is this material to the financial statement? Not when we're doing this. So this is really hard to get through, you know, without having any findings or anything. So you, you guys did a very good job and we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to your federal expenditures. You did have about 6.2 million in federal expenditures and the three programs that we audited covered about 46% of that total. And then the letter, so within the letter, there are some certain things we have to point out and share with governance. So we did focus on these four risks. So as we're planning for your audit, we have a planning meeting and then we sit down and decide, okay, where could there be potential for fraud? Where should we focus some of our time, create some new audit programs, create some new tests? So we never tell Ginger what we're going to do and we switch it up every year. You know, we have to keep her, her team on their toes. That's really what we're here for too, is to, is to check on those internal controls and the management override controls. So we focus on those areas, some of those being journal entry testing. This year we did some budget testing to make sure, you know, expenditures weren't being moved around at the end of the year to make sure we're within budget. We look at improper revenue recognition. So we have a hard cutoff at June 30th, making sure the revenue is being reported in the correct year. And then the lease standard, which was new this year. So that was, that was a lot of fun. I'm glad that's behind us. And then also because you do have some bond projects going on, is, is doing some of the bond testing too and making sure that we don't have any unallowable bond expenditures. So when we're all said and done, we had two items that we wanted to just put in writing. Those are what we call a management comment and recommendation. So it doesn't mean that it was a finding or material. It was something that when we were doing our, our testing of internal controls and financial statements, there were a couple of areas that we're like, okay, we just want to communicate this to the board and put it in writing on areas to help increase your efficiency and effectiveness. And those two items is the first one is with the food service net cash resources. And I can stand up here and tell you every single one of my districts, including the board that I sit on as a school board, got the same comment. So because of the influx in the federal revenue for the food service during the pandemic, lots of food service funds couldn't spend all that money. And there is a rule in the test that we have to do to make sure you don't have so much revenue or fund balance that exceeds three months expenditures sitting in your fund balance and your cash. So with that being said, it's just a recommendation that you make sure you follow your plan and you try to spend that down. We got the same finding and I have all of my other districts too, too. So, and then the last item was with the ESR budgeting. I'm just making sure when we did our test, there were two of them that didn't match up to the MDE budget. So just make sure that if we are moving some expenditures around, that the budgets need to be amended to match those two. So those were just the, the two comments and recommendations that, that we had for this year. And then my last slide that I have is just some future challenges. You know, the first one being spending and compliance related to state and federal funding. I mean, it's awesome and amazing that all the districts, you know, that are getting this increase in funding. However, that comes with a lot additional administrative work and making sure that you have all your i's dotted and t's crossed because when it comes time to do the annual reports and you know, do the, do the audit for the major programs, then we have to make sure we're following all the rules. And unfortunately, every grant has different rules. So it's not like it's easy to say, oh, here's a federal grant, we can follow this set of rules. Each of them, all 6.2 million of yours have different rules that you have to follow. And then as we know, there's inflation, supply chain issues. And you guys do have some bond projects going on, so that's another future challenge. You know, long-term budgeting, just to plan for the future. And Gatsby 96 is coming up too. So just like we did the lease standard, there's one that's going to be related to IT software. Basically contracts for the intangible assets with the right to use subscriptions. So that'll be in effect for next year. Bond projects. And then the last two items are the pension obligation and then your OPEB obligation. And I also this time pulled up the district I keep comparing you to. And their pension obligation was 55.6 million. So right in line with what yours was and your, their OPEB was 3.5 million. So very, very similar. I think you could get much closer than that on those for the pension and OPEB obligation too. So with that, I would just like to thank Ginger and her team. They're really great to work with. They are on top of it. We have a secure portal site that we use and they upload things. I know some, she has some new team members in there and, and they all did a fantastic job. And if they didn't know, they're like, I don't know, but let me go see what I can find and I'll get back to you. So we do appreciate that. It does take a team effort to get it done, both from her team and my team. And they're very professional. We enjoy working with them. Thank you. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
I have some questions.
Okay, of course you do.
And I have read this, which I highly recommend anyway. These are, all this documentation will be publicly available on our website by law. So all of this information in great detail is available to read. And the financial statements is a very, very fascinating thing to read because you can actually get extreme detail on many things that we've been talking about, where the money is actually going. And it's from an independent auditor that we contract with who's actually, these are the truthful numbers. So there's no hiding here. So a couple of questions that I have. One is regarding the ESR budgeting. As the state figures out where those money go, how do you, how do you audit against a shifting target? Or is that built into the auditing processes? Because there was what, three pages of, I mean, so the public understands it's like, for each one of these large grants, there's like 12 underpinnings and it's very, very fractured. And so how do we, how do we plan and support Ginger in this projecting to know that we're going to be within the parameters for our audit when we don't even know what those parameters are?
I wish I had a magic wand that I could help you answer that. But you are correct, there are a lot. I'm just trying to find the page where I have a, yeah. So in, if you are looking in the smaller one, that's the, the landscape version on page seven. In the middle of the page is where we have it all listed. So you can see the education stabilization funds. We have the ESR Formula One, the ESR One Equity, the GEAR, ESR Two, and then ESR Two Discretionary Broken Down. So it, it is very confusing. I know there's amendments that are sent out too when you do, okay, here's your, here's your budget. And then, oh, here's an amendment. You really just have to be diligent and staying on top of it and then making sure that budget is matching what you input to, still call it MEGs? Yeah, okay. I don't know if that's the right name, but to make sure that that's where it is. And then to keep in mind, if you have your expenditures lined up too, they have to be in line with that.
So it's that, you're compared against MAGS and how it's entered in MAGS as compared to our books?
Yes, yes.
Can we, if the state comes out and says, oh, by the way, you can't buy toilet paper with this, but you can buy Kleenex with this?
Yes.
We can shift those alignments?
Yes, yes. And you should because that's the reason for that comment is there were some that weren't. In total, it was fine, but they are very specific as to the line. I mean, the budget is probably five pages long for each one of these grants. And it's very specific as to the line items. So you do have to be careful. If you say you're going to use toilet paper for supplies and they say it needs to be purchased, whatever, you, you need to move then the budget and keep it attached to that expenditure so they stick together.
So that, that, just to connect the board, that aligns to our conversations we've been having aflight of where's the money going? Should it go into people or things? When there's controls and all these components, is that a, probably a correct, is that a correct statement?
Yep, yep.
Just one thing to add to that turnover. Jamie and her team looked at where we stood as of June 30th. And remember, we did have some staffing transition in that particular position right at that time. So we definitely deserve the comment, but I think we have better systems in place moving forward.
And also good to show the perplexity of that whole.
It's not a slap on the wrist by any means or it, it's just a, let's watch this, you know, just to keep you aware of it. So then next year, and when we do these suggestions and recommendations, we do follow up on them next year to make sure there's been, you know, an improvement.
So the question's much along the same thing with the food service. So not to have that next year that we need to spend down that amount to make sure we're within that three month, whatever the window of rules were.
Yes.
So we have to look at ways that we can invest those dollars based on the requirements of where the funds came from and how we can invest those dollars into our food service programs.
Yes, yep. And the second pair, so in the letter, it's on page six. The second paragraph to each of those comments is kind of a recommendation that we would give of ways to do this. So one of them is to, you know, enhancements to the program and, and just make sure you're following your plan too. Some, some districts, it's so big, there's no way they could spend it all in one year. So if you have a plan, just make sure that you're trying to follow that plan that you file with MDE.
And the other question I had, sorry, I.
You're good.
Was with the retirement, the pension obligation shifting. And there's really good charts in here to look at the long-term and all of that stuff.
Oh, yes.
But we have limited abilities to actually reduce that too.
Correct.
So we really, it's just one of those things that, kind of like you have a home mortgage, kind of an idea, little bits by little bits, but there's no way we can abolish that really.
Yeah, so what I explained to, you know, different boards too, like, think of it as you just bought a new house. Let's say it cost you $400,000. And this basically is saying you're going to do an annual budget. You and, you know, your spouse are going to do an annual budget. This would, by putting it on here and what you see by that obligation would mean that you, you're going to pay that off this year. Like you just bought that house. You know that you don't have to do that. You're going to spread it over 25 years or whatever your mortgage is. So that's why it, when you, if you look at it at big picture, it is all the long-term debts, okay? It's not like the district is going to have to pay that off tomorrow or next year. It is significant estimate. There are so many estimates in there with expectations. You know, a big one is just the investment rate of return. I mean, unfortunately, you know, 2022 hasn't been good. So that plays a huge role in these numbers too.
I have one other question, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to pull it up. Oh, I was noticing one of your recommendations is this long-term budgeting concept. And I noticed looking at all of our debt, our mortgage, our, our mortgage debt, our bond debt that is out there, just kind of a bump in like five years. It kind of gets kind of large for a short period of time and then shrinks back down as in the dollar amounts of the obligations for that period of time. And that's probably what your idea is, we need to be making sure that when we have a bump, it's like a hundred, $200,000 bump, just the way all of these bonds were structured. It's just a thing in the machine. Shooting for that to make sure that we have enough revenues to be able to cover that, correct?
Right, yes, yep. Been watching those rates too and you know, if it, if it's a good time to do a refunding, you know, to see if, if that is something that might be beneficial too.
The other thing I thought was interesting in here was, and I'm not going to be able to say this word right because I can't remember it. Property taxes in our community where they've been getting an abatement of some kind. So we have almost a half a million dollars in our community for that abatement. That's the other thing to be able to keep an eye on it. How do you keep an eye and knew that we had a half a million dollars of abatements?
So we have Ginger reach out to your townships and cities and they keep track of that because the property taxes that they've abated, they're not collecting, which then trickles down to you guys aren't getting that right now. So a few years ago, there was a new, new standard that required us to footnote that in there. So we have Ginger reach out to the local municipalities that you receive property tax dollars from and then we provide her with that information. So we get it every year because obviously it can change every year. If a, you know, a growing community is trying to entice some businesses to come in and they're going to give them a tax abatement to, to come here and you know, they abate their taxes for 10 years, then that's going to affect the, the school district as well and reduction of the revenue that you would have received.
I'm wondering why I bring that up for members is we actually had a conversation maybe a year ago with some other school districts in the area. There was a large box that they wanted us to join because they were going to be getting an abatement or an adjustment of some kind. It's kind of interesting how all that is connected in this recent act of conversation. Thank you. I'm sorry for all the questions.
You're fine, you're fine.
Are there any other questions for Jamie?
No, but I want to thank everybody, especially Ginger because I've been just hearing this last point. It's all the things that you do that we have no idea you do. And so thank you. I think you're probably the greatest reason that this audit every year goes so well. And so it's, it's really fantastic to have the team together.
Thank you. It really does take a whole team. I mean, it's, Jamie's team is excellent every year. We work so well together. Our team in the district is amazing. And just to give some credit where credit's due, Kevin Cole, bachelor at the RISD has taken upon the tax abatement thing for all of Gresham and his fellow counties for his district. So he does a lot of that really hard-hitting work with the tax abatement stuff.
But kudos and congratulations on 98% accuracy rate is another thing that we know. So just everyone knows, every board, once we, once we get a complete breakdown of all the dollars, where they're being spent, where we are in the year and how they are compared to others. And it's multi-page and Ginger's team does that for us every time. So you guys don't see that, but we see it all the time. And so we're always looking at these numbers live as they're kind of moving down the track, which is very, very nice and thank you. The other last question that I have is how did the Tyler Munison, which is the new software system that we're using for accounting, how is that working or is that not working?
A, a good point is that it's all electronic. So it's very easy to get all of the supporting documents up into the online portal. That's a huge benefit because it was digging through drawers, pulling out invoices, pulling up papers, copying them, scanning them, et cetera. So it's, it's really nice to have it all electronic instead of the old Oregon Trail stuff that we were on. So we're still working through a couple of glitches here and there. And once we finally have our payroll live, it will be a lot better too. So we are really still working into systems, but it's, it's been a big improvement.
Thank you. Jamie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
Also know that Ginger's going to be presenting a little bit more detailed information in her presentation in just a few moments.
Are you ready to move into an hour, Ginger?
If you would like me to do it now, I'll do it now. If you would like me to do it during the process, I'll do it then.
Always keep us the agenda and we'll do a little bit later though, okay?
Sure.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is an update from Armocleson High School and the district team. So I'd like to introduce you, John Winkler and Kristen Willie.
All right, John's passing out a parking lot. So if you have any questions during our presentation, feel free to jot them down. Thanks for inviting us back. Lisa teaches class on Monday evening, so she won't be with us today, but she's here in spirit. First, we'd like to talk to you about some points of pride that we have here at Armocleson High School. One thing that came across our desk this morning was Mr. Presswell told us that this is the first time in 12 years that his students had won the tournament in White Cloud. This was on Saturday and they won the tournament. They were very excited and I don't know if there's anyone here who's a part of the group, but big accomplishment with our Quiz Bowl team. Another point of pride is we just completed on the 12th, our PSAT testing. And students could qualify for the National Merit Scholarship. The four photos to the right-hand side are students who received that last year. So we were able to honor them with that recognition at the beginning of the year. And we will, we will see who wins this year and hopefully be able to tell you next year. The next piece, Mr. Winkler could share.
I'm going to jump in here because we got to honor two of our students today at Rotary. Me and Mrs. Verleger got to give Lily Burkhardt and Jacob Strom their awards today and two very deserving students who definitely do service above self, which is Rotary's claim there.
All right. And we had the pleasure this afternoon to hear our Fall Orchestra. They presented to our freshman success team in the auditorium this afternoon and their Pirates of the Caribbean was excellent. So I do recommend that you go attend tomorrow, Tuesday evening at 7:00 PM. And they have a great concert. at seven P M, and they have a great concert prepared, and I believe it's all around musical themes, so it's, it's pretty cool. Our next piece, we participate in the Great Lakes Apple Crunch, and this is where we support our local farmers and school food by purchasing and crunching into our apples. I think it's supposed to be at noon, but we did it slightly after, and, um, we kind of had a competition with classes to see who was the most creative, which was fun. Our next piece is Mr. McIntyre is still honoring our Athletes of the Month. These two are Josh and Giselle, they are our September Athletes of the Month, and we should come and share with you our October winners, we haven't voted on that just yet. Mrs. Davis wanted me to let you know, though, that, um, on a side note, our soccer team, which is what Josh participates with, they won their first district game yesterday, or, I think so, yesterday, and they move on to play at Petoskey tomorrow, so we're very proud of our soccer team as well. Our whole school, pretty much, it felt like on September thirtieth, participated in Orange Shirt Day. So our staff did some P D, and the two young ladies in the bottom left-hand corner, Kylie Guemigwans and Kaylee Sprague, they sat and designed our staff t-shirts, and, um, they were very, very excited about designing our t-shirts. Pat's crew did an excellent job with our oil spill, and did some interviews with students about their stories. And it was to honor the survivors and lost students in the Indian residential systems. And so, we hope that, and our students asked how our whole school could participate next year. So we are very excited that we got to participate in this event, and we will be distributing shirts to tribal council later this week. We have some events coming up that we would like to share. We are going to do a Veterans Day breakfast, our exams are actually the true day of Veterans Day. So we thought a breakfast on the Monday would work well. We have food plans, music from our bands, and we have a recognition that we're working with our oil spill crew. So if you know a veteran, please share with them, we'd love to honor them on November fourteenth. Some fun competitions are happening in our school, it's getting crazy. We are participating in penny wars, so if, this is our first Miles for Miracles fundraiser, and there is some competition going on right now with our teachers and our classes, and it's kind of fun to see that throughout our school. And the last piece is our Halloween event, which is October thirty-first, and I think it's Monday, which is not so fun for parents, but we will be there. And, um, not only is our students participating, but our staff members by department are competing in a Halloween challenge. So that should be fun. And that's our points of pride for the evening, and we'll move on to Mr. Wiegler.
I wanted to give a few updates from our last meeting, there were some questions asked and so on. And one of the first ones was, how did the dress code kind of evolve from previous years to this year, and so on? And, you know, some of the main things is, is we tried to simplify it for everybody, and make it a little more specific for it. And so, just a few of the things is, you know, it's, dress code seems to be an issue at every school, and so, we sit at many of our principals' things, I've involved with two different ones. One's the Gracchetta Isabella one, and the other is our Second Valley League principals, and nobody's figured out a perfect way to do everything, you know, and so on, but we, we talk a lot about it. And one of the discussions that always comes up is hats and hoodies, which seems to be our biggest part, and so on. And so one of the biggest changes from the previous dress code was us allowing, so it was always a safety issue, is what the, the question was on it. When we, we use cameras a lot to identify different things that happen, and who people are, and so on. And we kind of made the decision that hats, we could still see, and, and even if a kid, you know, a lot of kids will, that's probably their most identifying trait, is what hat they're wearing, whether it be a, you know, Bass Pro, Carhartt, whatever it is, and so on, sports team hat, and so on. So we figured that hats, we could still do the identification, and it didn't pose a safety, you know, issue. But hoodies still did, because it seemed like everybody wears a gray hoodie, or, you know, and so on, it covers their things, we couldn't tell who they were, and so on. So, we allowed hats this year, still don't allow hoodies on the things. Some of the other things is, we tried to make, you know, as we stopped trying to say how far shorts or skirts had to be, and so on, it's almost impossible for people to buy stuff, you know, in those, and so we just basically said, you have to have shorts and skirts, and so on. And we also, the same thing with tops, you know, strapless or spaghetti strap type ones are the, the new, you know, I mean, it's what most girls are wearing right now. And so we basically just said, strapless, strapped, you know, whatever are allowed right now, and so on. We just tried to kind of simplify it and say, it'd be covered from here to here, and, you know, make it simple for everybody to understand that, and it, it seems to be worked out, you know, really well in terms of at least communication, you know, with the kids and how to do it. The next thing there is, if you go to, like I said, you can see, we included both of them in there, but I kind of highlighted the, the main ones, is there were some questions about the staff process, and how does this go about, and so on. Usually, like I said, it just starts with, you know, the staff seeing something, and then, you know, like I said, in a respectful and private, you know, manner, will just say, oh, by the way, you know, whatever, if you have a hoodie, if you, you know, have something else, they'll just talk to him and ask him to please, you know, put your hoodie down, or some other type of thing like that. And then, like I said, if the student refuses, or continues to repeat it, then, like I said, it usually becomes something, that becomes an office referral, that at that point, like I said, either a behavioral interventionist or one of the administrators usually talks to the student to try to get him to comply, and then from there. There was also some question, or some things brought out that, you know, that sometimes when we ask somebody, mo- almost every time, the student, if there, if it was like a thing of, you know, not being appropriately dressed, that they came to school with some other outfit on, and then, or with another piece of clothing on, and so on. So usually, we just say, you have something in your locker, because usually we saw him come in in the morning with that outfit on, and so on. But there was also a saying that something came out of the lost and found, that's never been the case, at least, you know, since I've been here. We save all of the new shirts that were from old homecomings, or the class of twenty twenty, or something, and like I said, if anybody ever needs something like that, we have a new shirt for them. We haven't had to give out any of those this year, and so on, and I think last year, maybe once, but, um, they can also call home if they have to on that. And like I said, generally, if a staff has a, most time the staff will just send something to us and say, hey, will you check this one out, does this fit our dress code or not? And, you know, admin will check that out as they go through. I wanted to give you kind of some data, too, because, um, I wanted to show you, like, how many of these we actually have here. And you can see, so far this year, we've had what we, we've had five dress code violations throughout the year. You can see two of them were for wearing inappropriate things on it, marijuana things on it. You can see there was also a couple for hoodies this year. Eliminating the hat, you know, rule was a big thing, because even the kids who, I mean, I get it, I don't have any hair, but for a lot of kids who do have hair, some, you know, everybody loves to get up in the morning, throw a hat on, and not have to, you know, have to deal with that and things. So that was part of the thing with giving the hat also, you know, back to the students and so on, was to give them that. And so, that's, we're, we're, we've only had five throughout the whole year there. And then, I also went through and looked and seen how it related to last year, and so on. And so last year, we had, throughout the whole year last year, sixty-eight total dress code minor violations. There were some questions about males and females. Of those sixty-eight, sixty-one were males, seven were females in the dress code. And then, of those sixty-eight, sixty-three were for hat or hoodie refusal. And so, that left five other ones, um, in those, like I said, the same thing, two graphic ones on there, one sports bra, and then, back then, last year, we still had the strapless thing, we had two strapless ones, and so on, and that was the... So we had five all last year that were in there, that were non-hats or hoodies. And so I just kind of wanted to give you some numbers of where that, you know, that went, like I said, and so on. And so, in terms of like the male and female, in terms of total, to, to give you an idea of how often, you know, like I said, we really don't deal with it that often, in, on a day-to-day basis, so. Any questions about that before we go? I know we'll have questions in the end, but if you want to wait, or if there's something specifically you need to answer right now. Okay, I'll wait.
So I was going to just comment on, one, one of the board's comments last time was, how are we notifying parents when tardies occur, um, with our tardy policy? So when students are going through the tardy policy, if it's three or more during a week, they were receiving a hand letter, and I will tell you that Mr. Gregg walked, I think it was eight miles delivering letters. He times it like, it was a big thing. So we decided, let's try something different. So, um, after the board meeting, I spent a couple hours, and I emailed every single child and parent, and it took a lot less time with Gregg, a little bit more time on my end. And I actually think that we are going to be able to find a loophole with Power School, so that it could just shoot out a report to parents, which will save a lot of time on everyone's end. But we are emailing parents, and we are emailing students, and parents are definitely becoming aware, more aware of tardy. So that has helped for sure. I could kind of talk, do you want me to come through? Okay, I'll talk a little bit about majors versus minors. We use the illuminate, just like Mrs. Weaver does at the middle school. We had ninety-three since the beginning of the year, major offenses, if you will, and then seven, seven hundred and twenty-eight minors. And so, just kind of to tell you, from the beginning of the year till now, this is what we look at, majors per minors. And the next slide, um, we had Joyce actually take our top four minor incidents, put them in a pie chart, and we are consistently seeing that cell phones and asking students to put it away is going to be a challenge this year. We know that's one of the newer rules that we're trying to have kids whip those away during learning. I think if you probably ask some of the students in here, they understand that it's a little bit of a change, but also hopefully that learning time increases in the classroom. So, that's something that we are definitely working on, and, um, working on with our staff members. We had a little bit of a P D on cell phones and addiction to cell phones, which is pretty awesome at our last P D, and so even staff members were worrying about our addiction, too. So we, we read that together, and it was a good learning piece. On the next slide, you should, um, should see the top three, um, major incidents. So we have possession of substances, and this might include vapes as well, skipping, and class disruptions. Now, if you're looking at those, I think it was ninety-three, if I remember, um, majors, this is what it's broken up into. And then, all right, during the month of August, I think we had two weeks of school in August, and it shows the minor versus major. We have the whole month of September, and as you look at the first two weeks of October, we're, we're about the same as September, so I'm hoping we can be even better with those major and minor infractions. And if you look at the next piece, what we are going to try to work on, I know one of our student senate members talked about this, but we had our luncheon, and we were able to talk about some things that we want to improve in our school. So we're really trying to hit P B I S at a high school level, and I will tell you that one of our student senate members came up with the idea of Derek, Derek Dollars. So we designed a Derek Dollar instead of an Euler drop, and so students for positive, positive things we see at the school, they'll have some different incentive choices. It might be a slushie, or a pizza, or a plain, plain fetch with the dog, Ali, we might bring for an afternoon. So we're going to have some of those things more at the high school level. Maybe it's getting it for an athletic event for free, and so they helped us with that piece. We also talked about announcements, and how we could tweak them. Every kid does have a Chromebook now, so we're finding that we're adding attachments to announcements. They're becoming a little bit more interactive, students like that. We also talked about graduation, um, the student senate really wanted to have graduation on the Jumbotron at C M U, and so they said, hey, what are some things we could cut, what are some costs we could cut? Do you think our parents would be okay with that? So we had a dialogue there, and lastly, some school improvement ideas. So, we hope with some of those pieces, the majors and minors, we're able to work with our students and hear them out about what we could do to make our school a better place, too. Any questions you might have for us? Go ahead, one.
First of all, I really appreciate you asking the questions we had last time. And so that's really nice to get the follow-up, um, and to get the breakdown of the majors and minors, and get an idea of how that moves. I think for us, it's good to see, for the audience, it's good to see, and so, big thank you. I, I love the senate luncheon, I picked it up when they were bringing it up at the very beginning, and I think anything we can do to involve our students in this conversation, so that the incentives are things they want, and not things we think they want, uh, is, is a very positive aspect. I had some questions about the dress code, but before I dive in there, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it, okay? Uh, the few questions I had, so, the, what we saw is the update. You mentioned, uh, things like spaghetti straps, and doing, um, notifying students in private, are those new things from our last board meeting, or new as on like, I know it was revised, I don't remember when?
Most of them are not new. What we did was kind of refresh everybody on how to do it, you know, like I said. It was being done by just about everybody, but sometimes you need a refresher that this is how we should be doing it. And so at our last P D, we talked to everybody about kind of, this is our process for how we do things.
Yeah, I will say, and I don't know where that slide is, Jen, but we, we looked at that old handbook, and then our middle school and high school went together, and we combined the six-twelve handbook. And so, I think it was a hundred and twenty-two pages, and of course, we're not gonna be perfect the first time, and having some dialogue was helpful. So we did consult Trune, and we asked what, what needs to be in there. And so, finally, when you look at that revised handbook, I think that talking to the staff members, working with our counselors, we did some P D on some, like, unintentional things that might trigger kids with maybe bringing up dress code. And so we had some dialogue with our staff at the P D, which I thought was pretty helpful, um, in our last P professional development. So, I think just making sure we have tact, making sure we're being private as possible, and making sure we're having a conversation, you're not in trouble, you're not in trouble. We just want to make sure that maybe we're wearing something that is following our school dress code. And so it's often a lot of this in the hall, sometimes with the hoodie, it might not be a conversation, but a little bit of this, and the kid, we don't even have to talk there, you know, you know, and that works really well, too.
Okay, so that might answer some of my questions, because you said, it was really nice to see numbers, so there's only five so far. And yet we're hearing a lot of conversation about the crop tops, and so I was a little confused about, is the crop top conversation not counted there, because it's a reminder, and then somehow, magically, your shirt appears, and, like, that, and you walk me through that?
So last, last year it was, it was, it was something that was not allowed in our dress code. This year it is. Is that what you're asking?
The crop top, belly button. So belly, belly showing, so what happens, so let's say, I'm locking in the door, and I have, I'm just trying to, like, I don't understand how this works, right? I have a crop top, and my belly is showing, and then, and so someone tells me something, so I would get pulled privately, so I went out at the door, right, somehow, and then what happens, I, I'm told I need to change, or, and so, and if I don't change, right, and if I don't have the shirt with me, and I don't want to wear whatever you provide, then I have, then it's one of the five that would become a violation. So, do you have that right?
No, not exactly, well, I think part, part of the thing is, I think if I came to you, I might say, hey, so one of our, one of our things right here is making sure our belly button is match up, could pull up your pants a little bit. And that's one of the things that Trune actually said, high-waisted pants, check, you could do that, not a problem. Um, if you're like, no, I'm gonna wear my belly button out like that, we might say, we have a shirt for you, and you could pick one of those if you wanted, you could have up here and bring you something. Nobody's like suspending you or something, right, unless you, you know, unless you are insubordinate, and we're having a conversation, but that's not dress code, usually, that's not the dress code piece, does that make sense? And so, um, it's not the dress code piece, it's the way we're talking back and forth and having that discussion, so.
And honestly, most of our kids have been great about it, they wore a crop top, but also like a flannel with the, you know, things like that, and so on. But partly because it's cold, but.
Okay. I have a lot, but, go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to say, me which, for the whole report, and kind of letting us know what's going on at the high school, it's my first meeting, and, um, it just gave me a, a good snapshot into the wonderful work that you're doing there. Dress code is a delicate conversation for everybody that's involved, and so, one of the lenses that I like to approach things through is a trauma-informed lens, and so when we're talking about the process, and how the principals are deciding, is there anybody vetting or providing training on trauma-informed approaches of how to have those delicate conversations with the staff and the students? of how to have those delicate conversations with the staff and the students?
And that's one thing that our counselors brought up to us is they, we were having a great conversation. I think I learned a lot throughout this process too. Because sometimes you don't know that it could trigger something. So our counselors came and they put together something that it was called like unintended things that might trigger students. And we brought that up to our staff meeting and just said, be delicate, how we talk to students and how we bring it up. Sometimes you might have to let, sometimes kids are having a day, you know? And how are we talking to our students here? So I think that helps coming from the counselors lens and we chat about that. And we do have a lot of trauma-informed PD in our district, so that is helpful. But I think it's always good to remind us to do so. Like I said, I learned a lot too and am continuing to with this process.
I would say that that's a continued topic of conversation that Kristin said through our project to work training, going into year five, we've really been on that journey of becoming a trauma-informed school district. So I hope there are pieces of that that we're taking as we're approaching these situations too.
So some of the questions I had were whether, well, how involve other students in these conversations? And kind of seeing if there's a way that we can turn this conversation on dress code, which is delicate and hard for everyone, into maybe a learning opportunity, right? Where we can kind of maybe educate, you know, staff and faculty, you know, being tactile, but also our students. Some of what we have heard is not just comments from maybe faculty or staff, but from peers. And I wonder if we could find a way, I don't know, I mean, I'm becoming more aware of how middle school is working with a zero hour and some of those staff programs that are in there. And I don't think there's a high school equivalent, but conversational body shaming are so important at that age. And it does seem like some of our, the language as currently in the dress code, you know, when we talk about cleavage, well, it makes me think, yeah, it's specifically for females. And how are we addressing this? And can we, can we find ways that it becomes a learning opportunity for males in the building to think about the language we use and the perception that it has and the message it can send as well? Is there any ways we could, or maybe that's been done already?
I think there's a lot of social emotional teaching we could do throughout our school, but I'm big on think before you post. I think we had a lot of, kids are bullying through social media. And I think that that's an area that maybe we could target, especially the body shaming. It's a lot easier behind your phone to say it. And we're seeing that a lot in middle school, high school, even with my own kid out here in seventh grade. So I definitely think that's something we could do a good job with, teaching our students how to think before they say something or post as well, yeah.
And we have different groups that we meet with in terms of students to get their input from it. We also had some specific groups that met with all of the administrative staff as we were going through the process and then also, you know, kind of an explanation. And I think a lot of it was misconceptions. Because soon as we started to explain it to them, they're like, oh, that makes sense, okay. And that changed the, you know, the dialogue. But we can, you know, even at these, you know, student senate meetings and stuff like that, those are the kind of topics that get brought up and what do they need and what, you know, changes and stuff. And that's kind of how like the hats discussion came about and things like that. So we're continually looking, trying to improve somehow, some way.
Yeah, if we can use that kind of passion that they have about the dress code right now into that learning opportunity so that maybe sort of a little bit, why it's culture change, it takes time, it's incremental, but that we can, you know, kind of continue to push it that way. And for me, I guess there's one more bit, I actually like the revisions of the dress code. I like that it took some of the stuff out. There's one sentence that bugs me and I don't know how much, I mean, I don't know what our role is. I was trying to actually find our role policy. I don't really want to get in the weeds either, but I don't know what is our role in setting the dress code? Is it something that we can help direct the conversation? Is like, I guess I didn't quite get to our policies, how much we could or shouldn't be involved in the actual writing of the dress code.
So what you see before you this evening was directly given to us by Trune. So we could certainly, if there's a proposed revision, we could suggest that. The administrative team could look at that, we could go back and revisit that with Trune. They could talk about it with staff, they could talk about it with their student networks. But I don't know that it would be something, unless the board felt differently, that we would want to impose upon them without, you know, getting their feedback first.
And for me, it was clear before, you know, the word, there's one sentence that I felt was more vague. And it's tricky when we start to talk about cleavage, because it does change with body shape. And so then it makes me think, well, if it changes with body shape, then we're going towards this like really weird area where like, you know, it changes based on your body type, what you can wear. And that's where I started to get really uncomfortable. And so again, I totally understand, I don't want to get in the weeds or we post something. But yeah, I think discomfort was a good word for how I felt.
Just with that particular word of the entire sentence, or?
Yeah, that was not tense, because I mean, it applies into several areas. And maybe I can read it aloud for sake of transparency. I don't, there's nothing else out there. Yeah, so it's the middle one, appropriate student school attire covers chest, invisible cleavage, belly, stomach, buttocks, and lower back when standing or sitting. And I understand that we're trying to be more precise. Like I get that we're trying to be more concrete so that there's less room for interpretation, which I actually think is excellent. But then also when we get that precise, the, right, then it's going to be different based on body shape. Like it has to, there's no under way, and that's where I get uncomfortable.
So do you want to share a recommendation for what you would like it to be with the high school administrators over here?
I mean, I guess maybe I'd remove this sentence. I find that the, you know, sentence below, all undergarments including boxes must be covered, covers some of what we're guessing after, but I don't also know the intent of that sentence. And I don't want to, you know, necessarily, you know, bring up the whole thing again. I just, I just worry about how body shape affects what I'm, I guess it's what I'm trying to say. Dana, do you want to add something as you do now?
Yeah, I think that you're exactly right. That's such a tough area to, to address, because exactly that, some people can, for a lack of a better term, get away with wearing something lower and others can't because of, I mean, especially when you're looking at middle school, they're developing at different rates. And it is, it's a slippery slope, it's a gray area, and it is easy to fall subject to just some, it's certainly not objective. It's very subjective.
And I guess the reason I also pulled out that sentence is that I'm trying to think, you know, the school board hat is always, when I look at a policy, is who is benefiting from this policy? Right, it's kind of what I think of, and I totally get it for most of the others. Like, we don't want to promote advertised, picked alcohol beverages, drugs, like all that stuff. That can make sense. I can see who this policy, but that's each of the sentence help, and so I get there. And that's the one that I couldn't think, like, how are we benefiting our students with this sentence? Whereas the others, which is why I didn't have, I get, I get where they're from, whether it's the hat, the, you know, the footwear, like that makes sense to me. And maybe I just don't understand where that was going. And I just need that backup information that would explain this one. And again, I'm not trying to be difficult.
It's so vague too. You could say something is not descriptive saying, it's not an issue unless it's egregious. But what is egregious to me might be completely different than it is to Kristin. And so then we could staff member against staff member or staff member against administrator. So I'm kind of, I'd love to take that sentence out.
And I think these discussions were the same ones we had within an art group, which is how we ended up just going with what Trune said, you know what I mean? That's how we, because, you know, and it also kind of aligns to you. Originally, you, the teachable moment to me was, you need to be covered from here to here, right? And maybe instead of doing a language, have an image of this has to be covered, whether, and so it's neutral, right? So get rid of the qualifying languages and be more general with a graphic thing. Because I agree with you, you need to be covered from here to here. No exposure from here to here, right? You know, but then if you even look at the board, V-neck sweaters, I mean, there's going to be issues, right? Because their cleavage might be not showing, or they may be depending on body type. But if you're covered from here to here, then maybe V-neck sweaters aren't what you can wear at school. So, and maybe take the language out of it and put it into more of a graphic, maybe help around some of the triggers within that sentence that people are, will latch onto and just make it a graphic. I remember the middle school used to have images, something that they used to do instead of having language. And that might be helpful to give, that visual cueing.
And the visual is simple, like you said, and it's even, you know, us to say, from here to here, just be covered and so on. It's having it in writing, you know, and what does that actually say? That gave us the biggest problem. We knew what we wanted to enforce, we knew what we want our policy to be. It's writing it out in that form.
And again, it's going to be.
Having it be appropriate or having it be defendable by the law.
And like Melissa's saying is, there's all these triggers, right? And so getting away from some of the triggers may help communicate in some way. Because in this path, like we were saying, no matter what words you're going to put in there, there's going to be someone who's going to have it, where the graphic is going to be more, I guess, explanatory, or at least we'll find out.
I want to go back to a question we lean had that I think is very pertinent. Who is this policy, or these policy in general, who is it to benefit and for what reason?
I mean, I think a lot of it starts with safety. So I mean, most of them start as they go through there. And then basically to hopefully benefit the student in terms of what, that every profession seems to have some type of uniform dress code, some type of thing as they go through, or most do. And we practice everything at the high school level. That's our, kind of our motto, is we're just practicing for everything later in life. And so I guess that would be the, you know, and we're just practicing, having, following rules, doing things. I mean, it's bigger than just knowing Spanish, English, all of those. It's about saying, okay, I know what the expectations are, I know how to follow them, and I'm going to do it. And things aren't a surprise when you get out in the real world. It's a lot different than in high school, so. Let's say it for a guy.
Thanks. We appreciate it, we know it's tricky and I mean, it's uncomfortable. It's a triggering topic, I guess, is the best way to say that. And it's hard to deal with, and I know it's been kind of ignored for a few years, and here we are. And so when we try to enforce something, then the conversation's kind of made here.
Honestly, the cell phones was a bigger issue because that truly changed engagement and learning. And that's kind of our priority this year is cell phones. Because when we looked and said, it was across the board, there was nobody to talk to that said, what was the biggest hindrance of learning in cell phones? And so I'd love to get the discussion moved to that, because that truly is a game changer for us. So I'd love that that could be the discussion, but we'll continue with this one, so.
And to finish, I thought that the positive messaging in the bathroom, I think it goes in the right direction for culture if we really, so that's kind of what I was thinking, when I was thinking, well, how do we go away from that body shaming? Kind of where the dress code is right, and more towards the positive body image. And I think that's fantastic, you know, first, not first, but stuck in that direction. And so the more we can do where, you know, they can respect their own body and each other's bodies, the better. So thank you, I thought that was great.
Any other questions? Thank you both, very much.
Thank you.
You have any?
We're parking lots for questions.
I'll fill it up and then.
Yep, please, give it to us, thank you.
Next on our map report is an update on ninety-eight C legislation. As Gina mentioned, there are several new grants from the state, several new sources of state funding that the district is eligible for this year. And each grant or each source of funding has a different set of rules and requirements that we have to go through. So this evening, we are looking specifically at ninety-eight C, which is the learning loss grant. And this is a grant that is available to us through our stated payments that Ginger and I will initiate the application for this funding. It is a per pupil funding. And in this one, we don't know exactly how much it will be, because it depends on how many districts apply for it. But one of the requirements is that we have to do a presentation along this line by October thirtieth in order to apply for the funding by November thirtieth. So this evening, we are going to talk a little bit about what we plan to do to mitigate learning loss in our district. And you'll notice that a lot of the things that we discussed this evening are similar to what we've discussed in the last month, which is nice. That means that we're already on the right track. So, but basically, the grant supports a goal of the strategic plan, a strategic education plan in the state board of education to provide funding to local districts to address learning loss among students. And the guidelines for this funding is that whatever we decide to do with this money has to be focused on addressing our learning loss, has to be presented to the board by October thirtieth. This presentation has to be linked on our website. We have to be able to measure the impact of what we're going to do. And we have to be able to throughout the year, provide detailed reports that include the amount spent, services provided, number of students reached and outcome that measure that impact. So when we look at our data and we look at like what benchmarks we might use to begin this, what we're really looking at is the benchmark goals that we've already looked at every year. We look at three times a year. So what you see here in this first slide is our NWEA scores from the fall testing, which we just finished a couple weeks ago. And this is a percentage of students K eight that met that fifty percent benchmark, right? So we know that these are the students that are meeting the benchmark at the first plants in the fall. We will then again test them in January and then again before the end of the year. All of that data will be reported out in this format that I'm pulling up here. This is the end of year format from last year, where we look at where they scored in the fall compared then to winter score and then to their spring score. And if you remember, we've already sort of set our goals for this school year. We have to do that before September fifteenth. And then we report out once by February first and then again before the last day of school. So we're looking at the number of students that meet that benchmark. And then the second area that we look at is the number of students that show growth on those assessments. So those are the two things that we do. For these purposes, if we go back, what we really want to do is drill down and really look at that group of students that have the biggest need. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the activities and some of the current supports that we offer those students and how we might be able to use this funding. Next you'll see our multi-tier systems of support. This is a model that we look at often, where we look at eighty percent of our students receive strong tier one instruction. And you can see on the left side, there's the academic supports that we offer, the right center, the social emotional supports. So we're looking at a guaranteed viable curriculum delivered by our highly qualified teachers. We're looking at our strong tier one interventions and our professional learning communities. On the social emotional side, we offer a school-wide positive behavior intervention support system. We have our second steps curriculum and our K eight buildings. And of course, our Euler pack that travels around all of our buildings. Tier two then looks at the fifteen percent of our students that need additional support. So academically, we're looking at our title and at-risk teachers that are really focusing on providing those supports for students. And then reading and math interventionists. Under social emotional, we're looking at our behavior interventionists, at-risk counselors and our project to work counselors. And then tier three is that five percent of students that need our MOOC support. And those would be the students that we would target this funding for. Often on the academic side, it looks like special education supports, supports through our auxiliary staff and therapists, our ESL interventionists. And then looking at our social emotional side, it often looks like collaborating with community mental health referrals and collaboration with our school-based therapists. This slide should be familiar to you. This is a slide that Stephanie Byker reported on, I think, two board meetings ago, where we looked at our ester funding. Those areas highlighted. Those areas highlighted in yellow represent the areas that we believe really are implemented to address our learning loss through the COVID-19 pandemic. The areas that we're going to pull out specifically for funding under this 98C would be looking at our continuation of our PEAK partnership for our elementary students. Starting next week, we begin push-in services with our certified staff members, working one-on-one in these long groups with our students that need it the most. If there are students that aren't already attending PEAK, we'll be offering them scholarships so they can attend PEAK and stay after. And then next summer, again, we plan for our collaboration with PEAK where again, our certified staff members are pushing in. And if it's students that aren't already attending PEAK, we would offer them scholarships as well. For the secondary level, we're focused on skill building and credit recovery through our summer programming and our support classes. And then we're also investing in the letters training. There's a Michigan Department of Education, which is a high, high-impact literacy training that's offered at the elementary level. So what's important to remember about all of these strategies is that we're trying to do extra. This is above and beyond to take our students through those skills that they may have missed and address those learning gaps that happened during the pandemic. We will, the expected impact, we're still in the process of evaluating the impact of our students that attended this last year's summer program. Our plan is to target again that bottom 5% of our students to participate in PEAK through this school year and then again into next summer and provide those individualized skill building opportunities for students. For review and revision, the data will continue to be reviewed at three points during the school year, fall, winter, and spring. We will survey our parents and staff members for their feedback, is the program effective? Are there other things that we need to do? Specifically with this 98C funding, we do have to report out to the Michigan Department of Education by July 14th, 2023, to show them the number of students that were impacted, the success that we had and how we implemented this program. And it's important to note that all of this work does align with the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. And you can see there are the guiding principles that are bringing our students back in line, helping them address the learning loss that occurred through the COVID-19 pandemic and really focusing on gaining those early literacy skills, which we know are so important. So that's just a very high-level overview so that we can address our concerns and be eligible for this additional informed support for our students. The other types of supports that we have already applied for through the state aid fund really address student mental health and wellness. And then also safety that includes building assessments for security and mapping that'll be used for law enforcement and fire. So those processes have already been applied for. We're just waiting for the response. And then this is the next application process. Now that it's a high-level overview, so if anyone have questions about that, this-
Well, first, I'm sorry, she was not here to do this. I know that's what she was waiting for. Do you have a sense of how many students or percentage of our students that would be impacted by something like this?
So we're, we're going to target that bottom 5%. If we can't get that group of students, then we will go to the next level and to the next level. So as long as there are spaces available and opportunities available, we will continue to fill them. But we really want to start with those students that need the most academic support right now. And with, with the push-in program through PEAK that we're starting next week, there are three cycles of that program. So they're six weeks long. So the students that are involved in that program could shift between the, the cycles. We want the students to commit to the full six weeks, but the next six weeks, it, it could be a different group of students that are there.
I like the programming because I know anecdotally that the summer push-in programming seemed to work really well and had a lot of contact and valuable contact directly with students that he did for most of us. Nice to see us leveraging our successes and tests that we had done over the summer in that there are funds available to help support that.
The other one I have, I mean, I understand, I don't want to give anybody more work. I know NWAs are convenient. They're right there. It's a number, we can check it out here, but is it a ton of work to add the yearly evaluations from their, from their home, from their home teachers in K through five? I know it's, you know, I don't know how hard it is. Can we easily kind of crunch that into a couple numbers so that we could use that as well?
When you say yearly evaluation, what, what, are there specific assessments that you're wondering about?
Well, I'm more thinking, you know, as a parent, you go to teacher conference and you're told, okay, your, you know, your student is maybe A-like in ELI and maybe B in math. Or, right, we, we get these, these kind of feels. If they're not precise, they're not as satisfying as they, you know, whatever, to wait. But it's also, it may be more true reflection of a child's ability and maybe especially when we look at gains, it might show us what a, a number on the NWA test might show up, might not show, especially because this 5%, the bottom 5% might have a lot of, like, undetected learning disabilities and all these things that do not usually lead to good testing, almost standardized tests. And so we might do this in that, that again, support.
Sure. So and, and I can, I can definitely look into how we would report that out. You, you should know that through our team time together and our PLC presses, our teachers are triangulating the data. So when they're identifying the bottom 5%, they are using more than solely NWAs course. For state reporting purposes, we have to report on benchmarks. So that, that is NWBA. So, but I could, I could kind of play around and work with our, our folks to see what that might look like, but know that they're looking at a wider idea of scores as they say these students are in that bottom 5% where these students have significant gaps in their learning. Because it is different when you look at our learning loss. Not every student that has a learning loss because of the COVID-19 pandemic is eligible or should be eligible for special education services, right? So that's really where we need to differentiate between those students that we can help them with skill building and bring them up to a great level faster.
No, that makes perfect sense. And I would, I would ask about, I totally understand. And I think for identification purposes, that makes sense. It was more actually to see if we could capture what they do learn in our program in the growth that those, that having that yearly evaluation kind of feel might be a more accurate measure. And if anything, they should show more positive. I think they should do better with that than the test score. And so it's more for those that we can see, is it truly working that I was after? Not so much identifying, I'm sure our teachers can identify fairly accurately who, who needs the most help.
So we can definitely look into that, like what other assessments might be used to show the, the impact.
And as you said, we lean, grades are, it doesn't show us students' true aptitudes. So I think if we're looking at standards and how well they are acquiring and mastering those standards, I think that that's really will give a better picture of what our kids are, are actually learning, knowing, achieving.
Well, especially if they're getting some remediation, some, some services to, to help with that, right? And then you put them back in a testing situation where again, might be no anxiety, stress. It, it might not reflect the help they actually truly got. It, it's tricky. And again, I know it's more work. And I know we, we're doing this to get the money, to get the help. And that matters more than how, how we measure it, but.
Well, thank you. Moving on, the, the next item on our report is the PSC update. And I will introduce you to the incredibly patient, Katie Boyle. Thank you, Katie.
Well, thank you for having me back again this year. Tonight's presentation really is just kind of an update on some of the things that have happened either during the summer or that are in process right now since I last met with you all back in May. The second slide is a review and I'm including it mostly for the purpose of our newest board member so that she has that insight as well into what the role of PSC actually is. So if you've heard this multiple times, please forgive me. PSC task forces conduct curriculum review and research, providing reports to PSC and the board. PSC, or the Professional Study Committee, provides leadership and oversight to these task forces and provides reports and recommendations to you, the Board of Education. The Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education makes decisions based on reports and recommendations from both PSC and the PSC task forces. Historically, the collaboration of these partners have set Mount Pleasant Public Schools processes apart as a highly effective and valued curriculum review. So just to kind of share that, Melissa, it is, we are the kind of oversight of the task forces. And the task forces really are the groups responsible for making curriculum decisions and recommendations to PSCs that we can then present those recommendations to you, the board. So highlighting some of our summer work and ongoing work, the elementary task, elementary math task force, they did complete some summer work. We have a new elementary math coach, Amy Weber. She has gone through extensive training in math recovery. She is based out of Maguire and Poland, but she will also be working with other buildings, attending PLCs and offering after-school PD sessions. The elementary task force work, members are piloting two programs at this time. So different members throughout the elementary buildings are piloting. The task force will meet again on December 7th to finalize their decision. And then sixth grade was included in the review of the math materials as well. For elementary computers, two of our elementary computers teachers, Jill Jacobowski and Megan Stembridge, met in August to review the DK five pacing and assessments. Assessments for DK through fifth grade were reviewed and re-right, or revamped. And part of the reason this is, is because they have now been made to be more rigorous because all elementary students are receiving a dedicated computers class. So it was a good thing that we needed to modify them based on the fact that kids are having more exposure at an earlier age to computer skills. And these assessments are going to be used this year with their students. World Studies, we had presented a lot last year on the World Studies Task Force. And so just to kind of give you an update, the textbooks have been ordered, including atlases and write-on-maps, and materials have arrived. Students and teachers have online access as well, which is exciting. Professional Development for ninth through 12th grade from McGraw-Hill took place in September. And then Professional Development for sixth through eighth will be coming up next month with a focus on how to best use and implement the new materials. The secondary ELA task force is in process. And so there's a few slides related to this because this is kind of one of our big ongoing task forces right now. The middle school have syllabi for classes, including some new electives. They are continuing to work on pacing guides. They found a possible new textbook and what they have shared that they like about this textbook is that it's more thematic. It combines various genres of reading. It includes all forms of writing in each theme and there are engaging topics, which we know is incredibly important for middle school-aged children. For high school, the pacing guides for the core classes are complete. So now they're continuing to work on those pacing guides for the electives. They are seeking a new textbook and a young adult novel for the AP 11 literature class. And I've listed the textbook as ideas and argument building skills and understanding for the AP English Language Course. And the young adult novel is I Am Olala. PSC supports the use of both of these because they come directly from the AP College Board site and they're aligned with AP Lit curricula. So AP courses are a little bit different in that they are much more structured because they do come from that AP College Board. So anything coming off of the recommended site is something that we are able to provide our support for. For the next steps for this task force, there's a textbook proposal for a high school communications courses. They're actually looking at creating two communications courses and they have a few textbooks they would like to propose to us. And that will be discussed at our November 1st PSC meeting. There's new course proposal presentation for both middle school and high school again at our November 1st PSC meeting. And then we will have the task forces presented to PSC on the December 6th meeting so that they can then come before the board at the December 12th board meeting. It's our tentative timeline. A task force that has just kicked off is the World Languages Task Force. And I went ahead and linked in the actual charge. I won't read through all of that, but there are a couple nuances that have to do with a language task force, especially as it relates to middle school students who will then also continue taking language courses in high school. So when I presented last year, we had said that we have this basic template, but we do try to make it specific to the task force that it relates to. And so if you were to scroll down, Jen, a little bit, when you get into, our video's up, make sure I have my background. Keep going down. So when you get into the bulleted list here, there are some things in there that you won't find unnecessarily on math or on language arts charge because we're trying to cater to the specific subjects. So this has been sent off to the chairs. We have an admin chair, Lisa Davis, and then we have our teacher chair, Zach, who is going to be Zach Brown, who is going to be, which I said, he's going to work to our district. So yes, Zach Brown. They are the two chairs that will be working together. John Wiegler is the liaison for PSC to the task force. He'll be there to kind of supervise the process and make sure that everything is running along smoothly. I do want to note that this is a task force that probably would not have been initiated until January as our secondary task forces run from January to December. However, there was interest expressed by Zach that they are excited to get going with this. And so we wanted to honor and recognize that excitement and let them start taking off with it now. So when you see on the slides here that the tentative final report is November 2023, that timeline could be upped a little bit depending on how quickly they progress through the task force work. We just know that if they're excited to get going, we wanted to honor that, knowing that the charge would have come in January anyway. After that, curriculum documents. This is ongoing work that PSC is going to continue to do. We know over the last couple of years that one of our goals has been to make sure that any curriculum documents are easily accessible via online. So through our website and not only just for teachers, we're using those materials, but for families, for community members. So we are dedicating time to each PSC meeting for the teacher team in particular to be working on making sure we have access and ownership to all those documents, making sure they're the most current and update to doc, up-to-date documents and that they are available. It is going to be a little bit of a process because as we have all these different task forces, that means we have documents that have been created and modified by many different people. So it is something that we know is going to take a little bit of time, but it is a priority item for us this year. And then I did link in there the updated cycle review calendar. So looking at that now, it does go through 2025. And on here, it does show because of the availability of the ESR funds, we know we have kind of pushed forward a few of our task forces a little bit earlier so that we can use that money to update curriculum materials. So this new cycle review document does reflect the years where we are starting, some of these may be perhaps a little bit early to make sure that we can get those funds. What questions do you all have?
Thank you for this information.
Thank you for the update. Is that everything, Jen?
That includes my report for this evening.
Next on the agenda is requested financial reports. More numbers.
And I'm not done after this one. I have for you the general fund and special service funds revenue they spent in your comparison report for month ending September 2022 and 2023. For general fund, revenue was at 6% of budget this year compared to 7% last year. And expenditures are at 13% of budget this year compared to 14% last year. It's right on target there. For our special service funds, athletics, revenue was at 30% of budget this year compared to 300% last year. Expenditures are at 6% of budget this year compared to 0% last year. All year long, the self-study sports is going to be a little skewed because of the addition of the dance to the self-study sports last year. That was budgeted due to four, so it's going to be a little bit of a delay. You'll be able to say this again all year long compared to state budget. For the children's learning center, revenue was at 13% of budget this year compared to 32% last year. And expenditures are at 16% of budget this year compared to 23% last year. For nursing CNO program, revenues are at 0%. We've learned to have revenues in this program again. We're working on spending down fund balances. Currently expenditures are at 0% of budget this year compared to last year. For the food service program, revenue was at 2% this year and last year of budget and expenditures are at 12% this year compared to 2% last year. That's a good thing. We want that to continue. As you've heard Jamie mention earlier, we have an excess fund balance in our food service that we need to spend down. So we're already working diligently with the food service staff that we have on, on giving expenditures, getting new equipment, things that are allowed by the state of Michigan and spending that money down. And for the school store, revenues are at 21%. And for the school store, revenues are at twenty-one percent of budget this year compared to twenty-three percent last year, and expenditures are at ten percent this year compared to four percent last year. For our treasury report, general fund, on August 31st, we had cash balance of $12.1 million. We had income in the month of September of $826,000 and disbursements of $4.2 million. That brings us the balance on September 30th of $8.7 million. September is the month that do not receive these daily payments, so that's why it looks very skewed this month. For our debt retirement fund, on August 31st, we got cash balance of $374,000, a small amount of interest income of $43,000. No disbursements for the month of September. That brings us the balance on September 30th of $374,000. And for the capital projects fund, on August 31st, we have $24.6 million. Receipts in the month of $49,000 and disbursements of $361,000. That brings us the balance on September 30th of $24.3 million.
Any questions?
Do you have a question about the food services party because that was brought up this evening? Can you walk us through what we can use that extra balance for? Is it purely equipment or?
It's not purely equipment. There's a list of approved items that from the state that are already approved that we don't have to go get special permission for. But if we do come up with other items we would like to purchase, we can get approval. We just have to work with the state. There's a special form of approval. A lot of things on the list are inclusion equality, which we're talking about. Equipment is a huge one. I know we've been working for a year and a half now on replacing a food service truck. We have two, really both being replaced, but we've been having one milk. I think it's literally been a year and a half now. We're hoping that will come in this year to finally. It has to be, in order to come out of the food service account, it has to be 100% food service. So for example, when we went through by a mall, the cafeteria tables, we had to do a study in every building on what percentage of time the tables were used for food service versus studying extracurriculars, and only that percentage of the funds could come out of the food service account. There's a lot that goes into it, but we also have a lot of needs. I think there are kitchens updating spoils and refrigerators. We have a giant project coming up at the middle school next summer, I believe, so we can use, you know, some of the funds for that if we need to. There's a lot of possibilities.
There's no shortage of options. I know that one of the suggestions was reduce their lunch cost. Is that something that was considered?
Yes, we've looked into it. Typically, we have to do this whole calculation that the state gives us on increasing lunch prices. And this year, they allowed us a waiver to not increase, but we can go back to what it was before if we proved we had a big enough fund. So we definitely went with that method and did not increase it since we were charging lunch money in 1920, I think. So.
Thank you. Your time is up.
The next item on the agenda is correspondence. The board received correspondence from Bree Muckenberg. The next item is the opportunity for any citizen to request to address the board at any agenda or non-agenda item. This evening, I'm going to be the timer still, but the first person on my list is Ms. Wendy
Good evening. My name is Wendy Apple, and I am a resident of Union Township. I am a 1988 graduate of Mount Pleasant High School, a parent and step-parent of Euler graduates, a teacher in the district, and I currently serve as the Mount Pleasant Education Association's president. I rise to speak as a president of MPDA. In recent months, I've heard some comments that intended or not, start to paint Mount Pleasant educators with some negative broad strokes. Tonight, I'd just like to adjust that picture by reminding you of a few common experiences of Mount Pleasant educators. To honor the three-minute time limit, I'll speak specifically about teachers, but please know that for everything I say, there's a parallel statement that corresponds to our speech pathologists, our social workers, our counselors, our support staff, and our administrators.
Wendy, could you put up the microphone a little bit? I don't think it's picking up.
Little bit better?
Is it better? Can you hear her at all?
Not working.
Oh, has it?
No, it hasn't. Yours. All right, I will use my teacher voice. Many teachers rise each morning, thinking about their students and the instructional day ahead. Some of us arrive at school before sunrise, starting our time in the building with lesson work and preparing resources for presentations and activities, and generally making sure that we are ready to greet students when they arrive. Throughout the day, teachers consistently deliver state and Board of Education-approved curriculum through learning activities that have been carefully planned in collaboration with colleagues. During the learning activities, teachers use planned and impromptu differentiation strategies to address the variety of learning needs of our students, keeping documentation along the way to help guide future education decisions. At the end of the student day, many teachers continue to work at school with lesson reflections, grading, and preparation for upcoming days. The teachers who don't stay long after school can be seen leaving with a big bag of homework. Many classrooms have fruit and granola bars available for our students, food that is purchased with teachers' own money. Although it's not as easily seen, through our counselors and homeless liaisons, teachers also anonymously make donations to meet a variety of student needs, including school supplies, clothing, and even essential home furniture. In short, day in and day out, we honor the expectations of our contract, board policy, and state law simply because we believe this is just what professional educators do. As your work requires you to think and speak about staff, please remember that Mount Pleasant Public Schools is fortunate to have many talented, dedicated, caring educators on staff and that the majority of us are here as partners in education, dedicating our days and years to the children of our community through our work here at MPPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Tyler Morgan.
Thank you for the opportunity for public comment this evening. My name is Tyler Morgan. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant and a parent to a child in the district. I've attended a number of board meetings over the last few years, and sometimes I walk away a little discouraged by some of the negativity and some of the attacks that happened during this public comment period. So this evening, I wanted to spend some time to focus on some points of pride in the spirit of our appreciation that we've already done. In no particular order, let's start with the fact that our high school quiz bowl team won their tournament on Saturday. That's a great compliment. As a fellow quiz bowler, that makes me very happy. Or that our district recently implemented a one-to-one Chromebook initiative, which means that teachers no longer have to fight for Chromebook carts or to use the computer lab. And trust me when I say that you don't want to compete with a teacher for any of those things when their lesson requires them for the day. I can attest to that. Our district recently participated in Orange Shirt Day to honor Indigenous children who were lost at residential and boarding schools, to honor those who survive, and to acknowledge the trauma that is still ongoing. Speaking of our Indigenous population, Mount Pleasant has the largest population of Indigenous students in the Lower Peninsula, which adds such a richness in perspective and creates so many valuable opportunities for all of our students to learn from and appreciate the true stewards of our land. On a similar note, the Board of Education, for the first time ever, has an Indigenous member on its board, and it's well worth mentioning that the appointment of that member happened on Indigenous Peoples' Day. So congratulations, Melissa. Our district also has a number of mental and behavioral health initiatives that we should be proud about. For example, Project Aware has added counselors for our students and has provided professional development for our staff for a trauma-informed approach. We recently partnered with the Isabella Citizens for Health for mental and behavioral health services for our students, and our Euler Pack Therapy Dogs are helping to build social skills and self-esteem using research-supported methods. We also have many top-tier resources and partnerships that we should be proud of. For example, our PE program, I think is one of the finest after-school programs in the state, and I mean that. Our proximity to CMU makes it easy for high school students to dual-enroll and complete college credits, which I certainly didn't have the opportunity to do. We have amazing resources in our Technical Education Center, teaching kids so many valuable resources like auto mechanics, drafting, culinary arts, digital media, interior design, and more. And our Fine Arts Program presents inspiring concerts, musicals, and events all throughout the school year. This is certainly not an exhaustive list. I only have three minutes to share with you today. There's certainly much more we could talk about. And I also don't want to be misunderstood. There are some things we still need to work on, like we always will. But there are many great things happening within our district, so I thank the board, our teachers and staff and administrators for everything that you do to make Mount Pleasant a district that values the whole child and not just our test course. I'm so proud to live in this community and for my children to one day be able to say that they graduated from Mount Pleasant.
Next on my list is Kristin Nicholson.
Kirsten Nicholson, I'm sorry. That's all right. There's a lot of mispronunciations, but as long as it starts with the first syllable, it's all right. So I'm sensing a theme tonight. I too wanted to come here and offer my heartfelt thanks to the board, and I wish all the administrators who are here and the teachers for creating the safe spaces and the learning spaces that our children need. I've been doing some digging lately since there's been so many divisive things that have come up, and I've been trying to understand people who have opinions different from mine. And I've been digging a lot on social media and reading a lot of websites. One thing I've noticed is that we're clearly all in agreement that we want our children to have safe places in which to learn, safe places for them to learn. But where I feel we differ is which children get to be protected and from whom they are protected. The Moms for Liberty people said that their proposal was not anti-LGBTQ, but clearly it is, otherwise they wouldn't be working to dismantle inclusive support actions such as having caring conversations with teachers or signs of allyship such as pride flags or shirts. Statements made by these people on social media and at the recent conference in Troy convey a false idea that discussing gender identity or preference will cause listeners somehow to change their identity or their preferences. This is demonstrably untrue, as many of us work with homosexual and trans people as an example, and we clearly haven't changed as a result. By the way, interacting with people different from yourself is a really important life skill and something that you can learn a lot from by doing so. And this is what our students are learning as well. The Moms for Liberty group has been advocating for teachers to not disclose to parents when students reveal gender identities different from what they were assigned at birth. The reason teachers may be reluctant to do this is perfectly exemplified by stories that you may have heard about over the weekend or today in the morning sun regarding Michael Barrett, the man who's running for a seat on the school board and who is clearly gaining a lot of support from the Moms for Liberty group, as I believe Katie is also receiving a candidate. Barrett's daughter spoke out about how he left her and her sister in part due to his disgust over one of them changing their gender identity. A Moms for Liberty support member accused the doctor on social media in the comment section of having lost him because she changed her identity. Fortunately, their mother does love and support them both, and she has also spoken out on social media about Michael Barrett's stance and failure to be a loving father to their daughters. That's not what I consider to be a loving parent or a safe one for that matter, and that's why teachers are reluctant to share that info as it could risk the child's safety in a home that may not lovingly support them. It's a very sad story, and it's very distressing to hear, so I'm very grateful, all the more for our board members and our teachers who care and support their students, and I urge no one to vote for either of these candidates. Thank you.
Next on my list is Carol Spasinski Shaw.
I have a big mess. Oh, I guess I can't. This doesn't work. Am I right? Does it work? No?
I would still use it, please.
Okay.
TV.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thanks. Okay, so I used to have a couple, two different topics here. First of all, the high school is incredible, and I'm so excited to listen to the progress that's happening there and that they're on the right track to guiding the teens into adulthood and the social responsibilities that come with it. They're growing educated members of society that will continue to grow and contribute to the community. And there were a couple of questions regarding the benefit to students on policy. So I just wanted to, I think I was, I'm reiterating what Mr. Winkler said, but I couldn't really hear. And the benefit to students is that we're learning to, they are learning to differentiate when it is important to conform to societal appropriateness and when it is okay to express individualism. So example, I think he said something about work uniforms. If you travel to another country, it's appropriate and what's appropriate and acceptable. I've been to Guatemala, and I was told I had uncovered my body all the way down to my mid caps. You couldn't even show your knees there. Okay, so in certain villages and things. So this is just not all that unusual that we are told what is appropriate and what's not. And also in social settings, obviously it's different what you would wear at a funeral versus what you might wear to a wedding or a birthday party, right? So this is just teaching them about appropriateness. And then my next topic has to do with the predator awareness training. I thank you that you considered the information that I shared at the previous meeting. I'm encouraged to hear from Jennifer that the Darkness to Light program was used in the past and as an optional program, and I'm encouraged to hear that you also find this type of information to be critical in protecting our students and staff. What needs to happen is, this is the question, what needs to happen next to get this training as a requirement for all new hires and current staff? And can you discuss how to get this in motion as soon as possible? Thank you.
Next on my list is Lauren Frost.
Hello. To start off, I'd like to discuss part of the dress code and just one of the things that I see is with new policies that we're getting from the administration, comparison of the high school to a workplace where we're not allowed to wear crop tops or go on our phones because we're practicing for a workplace. But this isn't a workplace. I'm not getting paid to be here, but I am learning and I'm developing as a person. And part of that is doing that my own way and learning from experience rather than being forced to follow these rules that don't necessarily apply to every situation, whereas like I visited France this summer and I inquired about what type of clothes I should wear, and I wasn't necessarily told. And I showed up with a suitcase full of graphic T-shirts. Most people don't wear graphic T-shirts there. And part of it is I learned that there, and I could have searched that up. But school, I'm aware of it, and at a workplace, I can be informed that I can learn it there. I don't have to learn it at school. And a lot of students have jobs as they are also in school. They're not showing up to their jobs in crop tops. They understand that there's a uniform and they follow. And so I think that that comparison doesn't necessarily hold a lot of weight, whereas some of the things that it's used to support might have some substance, but the sort of argument and support of it, it doesn't necessarily apply. And then another thing that has been brought up with new policies is there's easing the transition from middle school to high school. And part of the whole high school thing is that it's so much better than middle school. And a lot of this easing of the transition, it's making the high school more similar to the middle school and trying to make it so that there's less to adapt to, whereas we should be more focused on forming individuals who are able to adapt to new situations and to figure out their identities, their places in it. And then to go off the part about Michael Barrett, I am friends with his daughter who had experienced those stuff, and she had told me to discuss this type of stuff that he has done and that he has no place doing this stuff, the horrible things he's done, and this fax persona of being a family man, when he has neglected and abused his own family. And also the partnership and scholarships with PEAK, that's fantastic. I'm so glad to hear that. I did a lot of the PEAK summer programs as a kid, and I felt like they've really helped me become the person I am today with interaction between people and learning how to express myself. Thank you very much for that.
That is everyone on my list this evening. We will go on next to the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, there are two items. There are the approval of the October 10th, 2020 minutes and the approval of the bills in the amount of $3,600,685.31. Is there a motion to approve both of those items under the consent agenda?
So.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, please answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Melissa, congratulations, first of all, being a school board member. The next item on the agenda is under new business, and we will start with a new hires. Jen?
Sorry, I'm just trying to pull that up quickly. Linda has three amazing new hires that we are bringing to you this evening. We are asking to approve the hiring of Aaron Bachtavich as a high school science teacher, Abby Del Sharpe as a fourth-grade teacher at Fancher Elementary, and Elena Sunken and Elena Sunkin as a project aware counselor for the Oasis Way program.
Are there any questions for Jen? Is there a motion to approve the hiring of Erin Ruchich? Ruchich, sir.
Bachtovich?
Bachtovich, excuse me, sir. Abigail Cherub and Elena Sunkin.
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 So moved.
Second.
And any further questions? All those in favor, please answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Next is the approval of the 2021-22 audit. Ginger?
Yeah, I just have my presentation to show you. As Jamie had mentioned earlier, I put the numbers, I don't calculate them different. They're all the same numbers, but I put them in a little bit different way for you to see and understand. I know we talk a lot about pulling the tribal grants out, because those funds are large and they're very designated for specific purposes. We already addressed the food service comment that Jamie had made. I want to address the SR budget one, too, at the beginning of this. I am working closely with our new, with Stephanie Byer, our new state federal grant coordinator, to work on new processes so this doesn't happen again. But just know that this grant is still open. It's a clear grant, so we are still able to amend it and make sure it all aligns with all of this. And we're not in any trouble for that at all. But we are definitely working on new processes internally to make sure that this doesn't happen again and to try to make it smoother, because it's a huge task to get the budgets always in alignment with all of the changes happening all the time with these large grants. But spending food service balance down and working on new ways to improve our budget process with grants. With that said, I'll go through these numbers really quickly, but I'll make sure and explain well. I'll try to. Our fund yields, general fund with tribal grants, July 1st, this 2021, was 8.3 million. Our ending fund balance was 10.4 million. That's an net increase of 1.8 million. And then I broke that down, how much of that was general fund and how much of that was tribal grant. So we increased, it's all general fund, but general fund without tribal grants, 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars. A breakdown of that 10.1 million dollar fund yields is a small, known inventory. We've carried this every year, had a long time ago, bought a large shipment of gloves to use in other departments throughout the district. There's a small supply left, there are latex, there's allergies throughout the district, so we're having a hard time spending, or getting rid of those. But we're using them when and where we can. Prepaid items are items that we had to pay in June for the 22-23 school year, things such as conference registrations for July and August, retainer fees for some lawyers, different things like that, that we had to get those bills through early for the 22-23 school year. That's what those prepaid items are made of. Tribal grants, again, the carryover in our tribal grants is 1.7 million dollars. Our building and department expenditures are 92,295. That mainly now is just our driver's ed program and our community alternatives program. We accumulate their net increases and use over all the year. And carry that out of our books in case driver's ed for some reason has really bad year-end spends into our fund yields. It's all still in our general fund. But we carry this little set aside on what they get back over the years and take it out. So we kind of accumulate that, make sure we're not going in the hole all the time for these different programs. Kind of make sure they're self-sustaining. Our subsequent year's expenditures is what was approved in June for the new 22-23 budget to spend into fund balance, and then our remaining 6.8 million is the unassigned. This is where Jamie said we kind of calculate things a little bit differently. I take out actual usable fund yields. So I can't use the inventory and verify for that. I can't use the prepaid items to verify for that. And I took out the tribal grants, because now we're looking at general fund without tribal grants. So what's left is the building and apartment expenditures, the subsequent year's expenditures, and the unassigned. That is 8.3 million dollars. That's a total of our actual general fund expenditures. That's an 18.16% fund yields, or 18.2. That's a pretty number, because Jamie says the state recommended a spending between 15 and 20. We're already in the middle of that. I think we're doing fantastic. Last year's percentage of fund yields was 14.79, so this is an increase of 3.37% over last year. We look at the budget to actual comparison, general fund again without tribal grants. Overall, general fund ended up being over budget by 1,630,000 dollars. We planned on adding back 717,000 in fund balances here. And with the effort of everyone in the district to consider a lot of the COVID-19 pre-finance we've been receiving, we ended up adding back 1.78 million dollars. And I'll go into a little bit more in this next couple slides to really show you how this really is an effort from everyone across the whole district to not spend their whole, their budgets. That 1,630,000 variance, based on our total expenditure budget of 49.2 million, is again a 97.4% accuracy overall, which I think is pretty good considering we're working with almost 50 million dollars of expenditures. And again, this is a whole team work that goes into all of these figures. I wanted to break down that variance that, because 1 million, even though we're looking at 50 million altogether, 1 million still seems kind of like a high number. So I wanted to break down the difference between what we had budgeted and how we ended up at 1 million dollar difference. Our revenue was over budget, so we got more revenue than we had budgeted, by 260, almost 4,000 dollars. This was a little bit more categorical than our stating that we received than budgeted. The GASM lease changes that Jamie had commented on that earlier, we had to recognize some revenue that we will be receiving in future years. So that wasn't budgeted for. And then the 3% return, which is really kind of exciting, I'm sure for a lot of people in the audience that are listening, we're finally starting to get some money back from the IRS regarding 3% ruling. I'm not going to go into all of it, but some taxes that we're taking out of payroll that shouldn't have been. At the very end of June, we started getting a couple of checks rolling in. We're talking about all four quarters for the years 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. So four quarters over four years, we're looking for 16 different checks. At the end of June, we received the first two. And they've slowly been through the line since. So we did not budget for that return of revenue, because we didn't know when they would be coming in. This is exciting news. This is our next big task for this fall, is to get all that together and starting these checks back out to the employees that they belong to. So that's really exciting. The building and department budgets that were under budget by 246,000 dollars, this is where I'm saying like, this really is an effort across the whole district of everybody who had to spend all of their budgets. They contributed up to fund yields 246,000 dollars of their budget that they can be spent. So I mean, kudos to everyone across the whole board, but that's a really, that's a big number. The salaries and benefits were over budget, probably a very small amount, 6,700 dollars. The GI Tech pre-CTE was under budget. Utilities are under budget. Happy costs are under budget. Substitute costs were under budget by a little amount. These are all things that we kind of estimate. We don't really know exactly what it's going to be when it comes in. So they're small amounts, but they were the bigger chunks that were over budget or under budget that I wanted to pull out for you. Dual enrollment was under budget. We had a large expenditure there last year, so I left that budget there in case we had that same large expenditure in '21, '22, but it was less than the year before. Custodial contract was a little bit under budget. The SR2 prior year is confusing. We had spent SR2 monies in 2021, but we didn't receive the revenue, could not receive the revenue until '21, '22. So I had expenditures in 2021, and I had to make them negative expenditures in '21, '22 for auditors. And they told me to have the negative expenditures but not have a budget. So that's why there's a negative 100,000 dollars. It's very confusing. I can explain it more in depth if you want me to, but it's really late. And we've talked about a lot of numbers tonight. And then there's a bunch of other smaller ones and this one is ones that add up to 43,000 dollars. So that altogether adds up to the total budget variance. I know I went through that fast, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to skip over anything. We're trying to actually be very transparent here. So if you have any questions, please ask me. This is again a whole year's accumulation of work and a lot of effort by everyone, all of us.
That was very clear and concise. Thank you.
And it's really helpful to see what we're with the areas. We'll be there over budget, so thank you. That helps.
Any other questions for Ginger?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. And thank you to the team, to the entire team, right? They've done all this work, too. Again, it's 15 million dollar budget to check, 15 million dollar budget. This is a lot of work. Next item on the agenda is anything the Board of Education wishes?
I'm sorry, do we have to actually approve the audit, just to before we move on to new business?
So the law states that we have to approve the budget that was presented to us by Jamie, right?
Correct. And you can't change it. So it's kind of silly, although we do need you to approve it.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the budget as presented by our company firm, Yo-Yo, where the, our audit, you're correct, our audit, done for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved. Second.
Any questions regarding all of the numbers that we've received this evening or the process that we went through? Not hearing anything? All those in favor, please answer by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And approved, accepting the audit from our firm, Yo-Yo. And thank you to Jamie and her team for doing all of this work, which is lovely. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education discussion. Is there anything any of the board would like to discuss? Not hearing anything? Go ahead.
Sorry. I just want to thank our students that keep coming to our board meetings. And I know what we're going to do tonight, and we didn't actually address that last time. We had an onboard meeting, but it's really nice to have your voice come, and we hear you. Just wanted to address it, thank you.
Anything else? That being everything, that is everything before this board. We'll call this meeting a adjournment.